Everything in order to welcome you to this hybrid meeting and thank all of you to have come in person. And I'm going to call the meeting to order at 7:00 and ask our administrator to call the roll.
Thank you. Good evening. Chair Brian Cafarelli, Vice Chair Christopher Brogan.
Here.
Secretary Marlene Batista.
Here.
Pamela Iaccone.
Here.
John Matola.
Here.
And John Nguyen. Okay, thanks.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is item number four, which is the approval of meeting minutes from April 25th, May 11th, May 12th, and May 17th. Everyone has received a copy and I would ask for a motion to approve them unless there are comments.
So moved. Second.
Having been moved and seconded, all those in favor, please say by, signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Those minutes are approved and thank you. And moving on to agenda item number five, public comment on proposed changes to the charter of the Town of Fairfield. That has been posted on our website. Before we get into public comment, just a couple of housekeeping items and then I'd like to call on our council. A little odd here, I'm supposed to keep this pushed, so I have to, it doesn't just stay on?
I don't think so. You might want to raise your hand.
Okay. Hold on. Is there audio Jerry, we're being told? How about now? Are we able to be heard? Testing. Can those, can those people joining us via the WebEx hear at home?
A bit louder, please.
Are you able to hear us at home?
A bit louder, please.
Testing at home. Are you there?
Yeah, it's a little faint, but I can hear you.
Very hard to hear.
Hello? Can you hear me at home?
Yeah, that's better.
That's better.
All right, dinner's ready, get in here. So once again, I'd like to call the public meeting, the public hearing to order. This is our public hearing and we have six of the seven commissioners here. And we are on agenda item number five, the public comment. We're going to be accepting public comment from those of you in person and also via WebEx. If you'd like to make a comment at home, just enter your name in the chat and we'll keep a running list, which Prue will call from. We're giving a limit like we have throughout this entire process of three minutes. And if any of the commission members have a clarifying question as to a comment that's been made about the charter, please raise your hand and I'll call on you. Otherwise, we'll just continue moving through the public comment as there are a lot of people and we're very happy to see that. Before I move on to that, I would like to ask Attorney Mednick if he has any comments for the commission.
If you'd like, Mr. Chairman, I'll be happy to kind of summarize the commission findings so far. I won't get into all the details and the number of meetings we had and subjects, but I'd like to walk through, if I could, for the public, the contents of the, of the charter. And I'll try to do it in hopefully less than 10 minutes. And if people start groaning, let me know, I probably don't, won't hear it here in Zoom land. But let me talk a little bit about the charter, starting with Article One. One of the things we ended up doing with the charter is we really restructured the document. We consolidated provisions, we simplified provisions, we eliminated redundancy. And what we did is we created standards in Article One of commonly used terms throughout the document are now included in the fairly substantial definition provision. Part of that is an important provision that is designed to enhance accountability. And that is where we establish the meaning of what a, what a meeting is, what a hearing is, and what notice is. Those definitions are included in one location at the beginning of the document where they define those terms. So every time you see public meeting, public notice, you go back to the definition section and you will understand what that means. We also moved into Article One, all the open meeting requirements and record keeping requirements that are in the current charter, as opposed to repeating them multiple times for elected bodies and appointed bodies. We just placed it right up front as we established the standards for the, the use of this charter and for the governance of the town. We also included two other provisions in Article One. One is your current Article 11, which is your ethics standard, standards and conduct. We moved that into the opening charter provision, again believing that integrity, ethical standards are an important concept to lay out upfront in the charter and therefore they are there. And a new provision that's kind of a companion piece, which are rules of order and civility, which talk about, I'm not sure of problems that you have faced in Fairfield, but they appear to be occurring throughout the state, throughout the nation. And these provisions just establish some very broad parameters for civility, for safe workplace environment, to make sure that the public is well received, received in a safe way, and that people can safely present their views in public places and that elected officials can do the same. And so those rules are established very, very clearly. In Article Two, the major change is we eliminated the elected constables and reduced them from seven to four and made them appointed on a bipartisan basis. We left entirely untouched the Board of Finance, the Board of Education, Board of Assessment Appeals, Town Plan and Zoning Commission, and ZBA. No changes whatsoever to either the composition or content of those entities. We did also put in a fix to create greater competition for the four-member election cycle to the Board of Education. In Article Three, and this was a section that we spent a lot of time on, the commission spent a lot of time on, was moving in a totally different direction, but met great resistance and ultimately determined to maintain the status quo because they were unable to convince stakeholders of the need for restructuring the current form of government. The, while the commission still believes that the RTM is too large and unwieldy, basically retain the RTM in its current status with the reduction from the 56, which is your max. Right now you have 40, to 30 members. The current charter allows up to 56. We also moved in, so we made no other changes in that section on the RTM. So the current powers that the RTM has will be retained under the new charter. The only other difference in that article is that we moved the referendum provisions, petition for overrule into the RTM section because all those petitions are follow-ups to RTM action, either on an ordinance or on the budget. In Article Four, again, we, the commission had earlier considered the elimination of the Board of Select Persons and retaining the first select person as the sole elected executive. And I don't use the term unitary executive since the commission was not eliminating the Board of Finance or any of the other elected boards of commissions. It was simply to have a sole executive. That is not occurring. The truth of the matter is, under your charter, you have a very diffused executive authority. And it will remain that way. But what the commission wanted to do, as they were looking at this and once they realized that they were not going to be able to make the substantial change, is they wanted to make sure that they structured the document at the edges to take a look at, so that maybe someday down the line, a future commission could take a look at the structural changes that are needed. There are no new real powers to the Board of Selectment, Select Persons, except they have a, an ability to look at contracts in excess of $100,000, which are exempted from competitive procurement and solicitation requirements that may be established by ordinances. On the first selectman's power and provisions, we retain the current authority that the first select person has, supervising departments, faithful execution of the law, periodic reporting requirements to the RTM, the current appointment authority, agent of town for labor relations under MIRA. We have some new provisions. They don't really expand the authority of the first select person, but they clearly identify the responsibilities, the responsibility for submission of a general fund budget and simultaneously a capital fund budget, which is a, an actual substantive reform that this commission is recommending in the budget section, preparation of long-term financial and capital planning with cognizance of the plan of conservation and development, quarterly reporting requirements, the RTM and Board of Finance, and a function of being able to determine the availability of state and federal funds to supplement local revenues. We also, because of the diffuse nature of the government and with the accountability being spread out amongst the number of elected bodies, and that's me speaking from, as an outsider, looking at the government, we did put a provision in here and there's another similar provision dealing with cooperation, which I'll talk about in a minute, that gives the first select person the ability to mediate and resolve differences. I believe that's implicit in the chief executive's function already, but I thought that my recommendation to the commission was that we include this provision so that it becomes clear to everybody that if there's a jurisdictional battle, if there's a dispute, that it's the first select person's job as the chief executive official under state law, that, that the chief, that the first select person has that responsibility. We also included the staffing model that acknowledges and recognizes the chief of staff as a position that's available to a first select person. As we were going, as the commission was going through the due diligence, it met with a few panels to take a look at the forms of government. One of the reasons they were looking at the size of the RTM is that if you move toward a town management system, council manager form of government, the idea of having a legislative body with 30 members, 40 members, 20 members, or 25 members is a little daunting and would be very difficult to imagine a town manager that is willing to take a job with a, a government that has a board of directors that is that large. So that's one of, one of the reasons why we looked at, at size. But even after we dropped the issue of restructuring the government, eliminating the Board of Selectmen, there was a general recognition by all members of the commission for a need for professional management. And as a result, the commission has recommended the appointment of a town administrator, could be easily called a COO or CAO. It's a position that assists the first select person in the day-to-day functions that she has as chief executive. It's a position that is similar to the positions in smaller communities like Stratford and Darien, larger communities like Hartford and New Haven, where the administrator serves at the pleasure of the first select person. And the objective of the hire is to hire somebody, as the charter says, based on executive and administrative experience, education, and credentials in the operation of local government. Article Five, there really were no changes, with the exception of some minor consolidations. You will see in the document, a lot of changes of stylistic changes throughout the document, but in terms of substantive changes, there were none. In Article Six, Boards and Commissions and Officers, again, we established some new standards to set the tone for the management of government regarding the authority of appointed town officials and establishing a higher standard in terms of the establishment of qualifications for administrators and department heads. This is the section that also has the required cooperation provision. This is a provision that allows and requires all town officers, officials, board members, department members, to assist boards and commissions and the pertinent departments in the carrying out of the provisions of this section. This is a provision, if there's resistance, that gives, gives the RTM some ability to utilize this provision of the charter, the first select person, the Board of Select Persons, whoever is not getting the cooperation can point to this section. It's a pretty effective tool for at least having a constitutional standard for gaining cooperation. We altered residency requirements for assistant town attorneys, police chief, and fire chief. That's also in that section. There are no significant changes in the appointed board and commission section, with the exception of some minor modifications in the, in the Public Works Department, the Parks Department, Parks and Recreation, and the name of the Flood Prevention, Climate Resilience, and Erosion Control Board. The final change, I'm hoping to get this done quickly, is in the budget. Again, in the budget section, Article Nine, we reiterate the cooperation of officials, that the Board of Education, departments, all must cooperate with the first select person, the Board of Select Person, the Board of Finance, and the RTM to work together in good faith throughout the year to develop and approve a budget. There is more detail and more accountability in this budget process. We also have created a budget that is a unified budget, both the general and capital side. I know that you have some capital process. This really formalizes and marries the two processes so that the public will be aware at the height of its awareness, when you're going through a budget process, that there's a capital budget that you should be just as concerned about in terms of the long-term debt obligations of the community. That officials are required by this charter to use best practices in the field of municipal and public finance in order to comply with the law and should embrace principles of transparency, accountability, and outreach in order to expand public engagement and trust in the budgetary process. We state very clearly, language that is not in the charter, it's kind of self-evident, but we thought it was a kind of self-evident thing that should be declared in the charter, that the budget is a public record entitled to full public inspection and accountability. And, and the first select person is required, which is a new requirement, to provide access online through social media, the town website, dashboards, email chains to community organizations and members of the public regarding the budget process. We also mandate the development of a budget calendar in January of, of the, of the year so that members of the public can go from the beginning and look from the beginning of the process to the end of the process and understand where everything, when everything is going to take place, and by whom. And then finally, I will point out that the budget obviously goes through the same linear process from the first select person to the Board of Select Persons, to the Board of Finance, and then ultimately the RTM and possible petition for referendum. But there's a new device that was formalized in the charter, I think there was an informal practice in the past that is being formalized in the charter, that requires the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Finance to conduct a joint comprehensive review of the budget, proposed budget, of each department or entity that proposes a budget, including the Board of Ed. This takes place when the first select person submits the budget to the Board of Select, Board of Select Persons. Under the charter provision, the RTM may have a role in this process based on the rules. I think that the objective would be to find that the group of questioners or interlocutors, as we call them in the, in the charter, for the RTM would be limited to a specific number, whether it's nine or 10, basically the size of a committee, so that you don't have 30 or 40 members of the RTM involved in the process at that time. It would be like members of a committee of jurisdiction, might be one way, one model to look at for participation in that process. Once that is completed, the Board of Selectmen will approve the budget, submit it to the Board of Finance, not later than the fourth Monday in March. We, we have not changed any role or function of the Board of Finance, except they have that requirement to meet with the Board of Selectmen. However, in spite of the joint meeting, the charter is very clear that they may hold any number of meetings, quote, "as it determines necessary." So there's been no change to the jurisdiction or oversight function of the Board of Finance during the budget season or any other time throughout the year. They still conduct their public hearing and then submit the item to the RTM and not later than the fourth Monday in April. And again, the RTM, who will hopefully be participating in that joint meeting, again, has every, has the same responsibilities it has in the current charter, in the new charter, and again, can hold any meetings as it determines necessary up until the time, the second Monday in May, that they have to approve this at the annual budget meeting. So those are the key provisions. I didn't want to take too much of your time, this is your night, it's your, the second statutory public hearing, and I, I just want to wish everybody well tonight, and I look forward to listening to, to the discussion. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much, Counselor, and again, for all the work that you've done and guidance throughout this process. I think that's very helpful to give an overview. So we'd like to get into the public comment, and we're going to start with the members who are here and then kind of, you know, transition between the both, but we'll see how many come in the chat. I don't, did we have a sign-up sheet, Prue, or? Okay, so do we want to have people sign up in advance, or?
Just, no.
Okay. All right, so I guess just the first member of the public that would like to speak. If you could just put your name and address and give us your name orally too, that would be helpful for the record.
Push the whole time, okay? Okay, thank you. Good evening, my name is Steven Scheinberg. I live at 15 Flax Road. I want to thank each and every one of you for your public service. I am first a citizen of Fairfield, and as you all know, the chairman of the Fairfield Democratic Town Committee for over six years. I speak both as a citizen and as chairman. There is no conflict between those two positions. Charter reform should be non-political and non-partisan. It should not favor either political party, it should not be liberal or conservative. It should be a common sense consensus to reform the charter for better government, a government with checks and balances, accountability, and transparency. A good consequence of this process is that there is broad consensus of what good government looks like. In fact, the consensus on the Democratic side of this panel by John Matola and Chris Brogan finds support from independents and some prominent Republicans like Bud Morton and Kathy Braun. Please see their letters. Liberals and conservatives have much common ground on charter reform. The broad consensus includes an RTM with no minimum minority representation, keeping the RTM at 40, which is one member for 1,000 voters in 10 districts, an RTM that has access to legal services. On the budget, the current process works very well. We need a professional town administrator appointed by the Board of Selectmen. On civility, it's about adherence to Robert's Rules of Order. I have listened to most of your meetings and read many letters from leading Democrats and Republicans. There is no broad support for proposed changes to the RTM and especially not minimum minority representation. It is anti-democratic, it is exempted by state statute. Elected RTM members in a district represent all voters, citizens in that district. There is no broad support for reducing the number of members of the RTM from 40. It is hard enough for four members to cover the districts now. There is no support or data to support these changes. If you stay with the plan proposed by some members of this board to vote for radical change to the RTM and the budget process, then many voters, including Republicans, Democrats, and independents, will vote no in November, and all the good changes to the charter will not be implemented. May I remind you all that three out of four voters in this town are not Republican. 10 weeks ago, as Chair of the DTC, I had two conversations with our town attorney, Jim Baldwin. Thank you, Mr. Baldwin, for listening to our concerns and the proposed changes. My message to him is my message to you tonight. If you go down the road, please go down the road of total collaboration, compromise, and consensus. I ask you, Mr. Chairman, unite this board for good governmental reform, build the bridges of consensus, unite the town, be town leaders, and rise above all. Then the Town of Fairfield and all the people are winners. We are one town. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you for your comments. If we could keep order, and I know that everyone's going to have comments that are applause-worthy, but it'll take up some time, so if we could just move on to the next speaker, that'd be very helpful, and thank you again for your comments.
I'm Sharon Pistilli. I'm also uncoordinated, so let's see if I can do this while holding a button down. I'm Sharon Pistilli. I am on the RTM in District Three. My views are my own and don't necessarily reflect the views of my caucus. A strong democracy begins at home, and it begins with representation. While democracy on a global basis has been on the decline, we need to make sure that our democracy stays strong at home. I'm in favor of keeping the RTM as a 40-member body because a body of that size allows for the many different neighborhoods of Fairfield to have a say in our government. It spreads power across the diverse areas of our town, and it ensures that everyone has a voice. In a town of 60,000, one representative per 1,500 people is an appropriate ratio. Reducing to a 30-member body would create too much consolidation of power, and also providing minority representation would not reflect the will of the voters. Currently on the RTM, we have representatives with a wide variety of backgrounds who look at the world through different lenses, and this kaleidoscope creates a far more effective government. We look at issues that the town faces through the eyes of a teacher, a finance director, an attorney, a real estate agent, a human resources consultant, a first responder, a not-for-profit communications expert, a civil engineer, a mental health practitioner, a physical therapist, a logistics expert, a PTNA member, a parent, a grandparent, graduates of Fairfield Public Schools, just to name a few of the backgrounds that we all bring to the table. Not only does the 40-member body allow for the variety of backgrounds to bring their expertise expertise to us, it allows the residents of town to have more access to their elected leaders, because they are more likely to know their representative as a friend or a neighbor. This increases civic participation. At the neighborhood level, we get involved in matters such as the timing of the traffic light being wrong, causing traffic jams on Burroughs Road, a storm drain that was clogged on Black Rock Turnpike, a blight problem on my own street, and various other local issues. Members of the RTM educate the community on how government departments and the boards and commissions work, how to advocate for their ideas with their elected officials, and how to advocate for themselves for services that they might need from municipal government. To narrow the representation of the RTM is to weaken the diversity of thought that we all bring to the table, and this results in a weaker and less effective government. Instead, let's take the approach of a stronger and broader approach, which is a 40-member body. Let's not forget, as we've just celebrated Memorial Day, that our veterans have fought and died for democracy. They have fought for our right to self-govern. So let's protect our government here in Fairfield, and let's keep a 40-member RTM. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. All right, the next speaker.
Hi, my name is Kevin Flynn. I reside at 67 St. John Road in Fairfield. I'm a constable. I've been a constable for seven years, on my fourth term. I have no idea why this commission wants to reduce the size of the constables. Seven out of eight constables are elected. There's enough services to go around. The town of Fairfield is expanding its population. We need as many process servers to serve the people, the elderly, the mentally ill. There's no reason at all to give the Board of Selectmen the power to make it four appointed people when the people should speak. The people should always speak. The RTM should not be changed. This town is a great town, okay? We are not Stratford, Connecticut. We are Fairfield, Connecticut. And this town is the greatest place to live in this country, and I suggest no changes to your Charter. Thank you very much.
Thank you. If you haven't done so yet, you could write your name and address on the.
Good evening. Chairman Capirelli and Attorney Mednick, hi, how are you? And members of the Commission. So my name is Dick Mahusky, and I live on Colonial Drive. I'm a member, I'm actually the Secretary of the Flood Erosion Control Board. I have the green light on. Do I need to shout? Okay, sorry. See, now you're going to give me stage fright. So, so that, the letter, the email that I sent, kind of says it. So she sent the email, and that was our board. We felt changes that we proposed will enhance the ability of our board to support and encourage our town to improve resilience and mitigate damages in future storms. While the current revised Charter does add the Director of Public Works as an ex officio member and updates our name per Public Act 21115, which I think took an inordinate amount of time at your 512 meeting. It does not address the alternate member issue, nor the issue of revising the powers and duties to reflect the changes in that same Public Act. Those items do appear in your issues tracking chart, but they were not discussed at the 512 meeting. I will end here and simply reiterate the offer made in our 1115 letter to be available to answer any questions or appear at any meetings to further discuss our proposals. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for dealing with the technical difficulties so graciously.
Is that the button? Don't know if I can talk and push a button at the same time, but. My name's Judy Ewing. I live at 98 Sasko Hill Terrace, and I was appalled to find out that I had to speak for three minutes on a 90-page document. Everything I wanted to say is taking one minute, and I had about 10 points. I made copies for you, and I gave them to Prue, so if you won't mind me, did she give them to you? Okay, very good. I'm going to start talking about midway down the first page. My concern was that there was a great deal of discussion during the meetings. I've watched all the meetings on WebEx or Fair TV, and I felt that there was very little due diligence involved. Many of the items that came up, you all shook your heads, you all talked about it, but did you ever go out and do any research or find out exactly how these things were going to work? For one thing, after hearing about the various forms of government, the decision to hire a town administrator was the right one. I agree with that. But did any of you search any of the information about towns that have this position? And if so, why does the language state that this would be someone that only a first select person can hire and fire? Because other towns require that the Board of Selectmen or other groups, maybe a selected group of hiring and firing people, would be involved. It's not just another political position. It was presented to us as really a good alternative to have a professional at the helm, watching over things, would serve the whole town, not just the first selectman. So I was surprised to see that wording, that language, in the document. I think the Board of Selectmen should at least be involved in the hiring and firing. The second point is, again, the due diligence. I was particularly interested in your solution to the Board of Ed problem, the four-seat Board of Ed problem, but in figuring it out, I sat one day and just worked out various scenarios. There are flaws in this whereby there still could be automatic elections. I'm not going to tell you what I found. You can work it out. You're as smart as I am. Similarly, I'm concerned about the minority representation clause. It's not required by law. We have a district, political districts in our town, and it's, we could choose not to do that, and we have for many, many, many years. Was this a good idea? Who thought this? It's very, listen to my button here. It's very undemocratic, and it also discourages competition and active participation to reach out to voters in a number of districts, thus diminishing the democratic election process. Why would a party who thinks they can only win one seat put up more than one person? Why would the people that think they can make two, get two seats, put up three people when they can just put up two people?
All right, we have hit the three-minute limit. Is there, is there a way to summarize very briefly?
Send us by email, so you have it in front of you in writing, and I'll send it by email. It can go in the record. There are many, many more things I want to.
All right, well, I do appreciate you coming here tonight, and we have heard from you before, and we have your letter, and we'll definitely look at it, but thank you for your comments. At this point, we're going to, we're going to take the first person from the WebEx, and then we'll go back to the in-person.
Okay, I have Violet Lumani.
Yes, thank you, I'm here. Appreciate your time. My name is Violet Lumani. I live at 27 Rhode Island Avenue, and I've lived in Fairfield for 16-plus years. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Okay, great. So I am very troubled by so much of this proposal, that it would actually take a shorter amount of time to outline the parts I don't find objectionable. My main concern, however, boils down to two. We've had our town system of representation in place for a very long time, and it has served us well. Now, not at all suspiciously, after the first select woman's party was rebuked in the last election, and she lost the Board of Finance after decades of Republican leadership, we now need to consolidate power in her hands, in her party's hands? A first select woman who regularly calls anyone who dares ask her questions obstructionist?
Ma'am, we're actually taking comments regarding the Charter and the substance of the Charter, so if you have comments limited to that, if you could focus it.
I think that, I think that we're supposed to deliver more power into those hands when the voters of Fairfield decided the exact opposite in the last election. And as an independent and unaffiliated voter, I believe no party should have such an outsized amount of control and the ability to circumvent answering to their constituents. Here we have a population that's growing a ton, and the answer is to shrink the number of representatives from 40 to 30 in capitans, and that's not to mention the participation trophy that is minority representation, where no more than the two RTM members out of three in each district can be from the same party regardless of who's elected. Something that should not, that should apply to town-wide offices, not legislative bodies like the RTM. I don't know how anybody can argue that that is better for our democratic process. So in short, this smacks of a power grab, no matter what double steep we apply to it, and it's not in a specially veiled or subtle one either. I appreciate your time.
Thank you for your comments. We'll take the next person from the audience.
Hi, Drew Georgiades. I've lived in town 31 years. I live at 321 Puritan Road. I'm currently in my fourth term as, on the RTM in a swing district. I'd like to address two things. I wish that in this Charter revision, we could address the issue of bipartisanship. Everyone is always trying for bipartisanship. I would love to have the people appointed to bipartisan committees have been registered in that party for one year and to remain in that party for one year following their appointment to that commission, and that would guarantee that these people are specifically in that party. My second comment is on the RTM. Being from a swing district, I find that the 40 number of RTM representatives works very well. We have obviously town-wide responsibilities, but we also have local ones. And the four of us in my district have worked on specifically district issues such as safety fences, street painting, flashing stanchions, all sorts of things that only the RTM person in that district would know about and can interact with the police and the various people and my constituents, because they're the ones that call me up and ask me to put a safety fence around the Sherman Playground, and that took me three years. So I would also like to address, in your item here, about the RTM and the minority representation, it says I would add minority party representation requirement in line with all their town boards and commissions. All town, other town boards and commissions are town boards and commissions, and therefore they speak to the town. To reduce it to a district level is not necessary, because you have town-wide minority representation within that Board of 40. And to reduce it to the district level is undemocratic, and it smacks of gerrymandering. So I would recommend that you do not do something like that. And again, it's a big town. I think it works well, and I hope that you will reconsider. Thank you very much.
Thanks for your comments. The next person from the audience? Prue, how many do we have waiting on the?
I just see Dylan O'Connor.
Thank you. So after this, we'll go back to WebEx.
You can hear me. Hi, my name is Laura Carson. I live at 187 Buena Vista Road. I'm also on the RTM, District Four, and I'm here to, first, I agree that minority representation is very undemocratic, and it's the will of the people. You need to hear their voice, and to have the minority person put. Even if, in my district, the top four happens to be Democrats, all won, I think, by 60% and above. The Republican was 40%, and now you're going to put it on and kick off the person that the district wanted? I just can't fathom that that's a good idea. But I also would like to speak to the value of the RTM. I've been hearing a lot about how unwieldy it is. Well, welcome to democracy. Democracy is unwieldy, and what you mean unwieldy is if there's people that stand up and speak to something that may not be something that the other side likes, either way, it's unwieldy. That's the way it goes. I'm sorry. That's wonderful democracy. So, but I also want to speak to the value of being an RTM rep, not just speaking up at meetings and, you know, deciding on budgets and passing resolution for bonding. We serve the people of our district. And as an example, just recently, we got an email in my district from a man named Adam Simon, who lives on Toilsome Hill. He would have come here to speak tonight, but he's away on business, and he let, he said, please invoke his name and tell the story. And I, we read the email, and I took the lead, and it was about a wire that was hanging down on the street and had been there for a few weeks. He had called the town, no response, no response. So I reached out to the fire department and left a message, and I got a message back from the secretary saying that Deputy Chief Calipar, Caliper, sorry, Caliper, would, is going to go over to the street and was willing to go to the, to Adam's house and speak to him and see what he assessed of the situation. And it turned out, Adam reached out to me, said he came over, he identified the wire as AT&amp;T, they're going to notify AT&amp;T to come fix it. So I said, great, I'm glad I could be of help after not having heard back from the town. So about a week later, he emailed me and said it stalled, the wire's still hanging. So I immediately emailed, I called, so I called the fire department and left a message again, and within hours, the wire was fixed, and Adam was very grateful. And I feel that is such a wonderful part of my job, to be able to help people, to touch them, make their lives better, and to reduce the amount of people is anathema to me. And I'm glad to have as many people in the district on the RTM to help, because we have different needs, and sometimes one picks up where the other one doesn't. So I'm just advocating for the RTM to remain as it is. If it ain't broke, don't fix, and it's more than it's not, it's so not broken. It's really a wonderful representative body, and I would like to keep it as it is. Thank you very much.
Thanks for your comments. Oh, just in the nick of time, too, that was great. Yeah, if you could write your name and address there, and in the meantime, we're going to go to the next person on WebEx, please.
So it turns out that there are a few people before Mr. O'Connor. So Jay Walk is next.
Mr. Walk?
Yes, I'm here. Thanks for, for all your work that you've done to put this together. I know it wasn't easy. I'm Jay Walk, 1157 Stratfield Road. I'm an RTM member in District Five. I am also a constable. So the first thing, I'll make this quick, the first thing I want to talk about is the constables. Seven constables is good, because in case the probate court calls us, there may not be a constable available to serve papers, so they go to the next person. The more people that they have to call, the better there is. I'm not quite understanding why we want to make this into, to have the Board of Selectmen office appoint us. To me, it doesn't make any sense. I mean, we don't get paid by the town. We get paid by the person we serve the papers to, a nominal fee. We do this to serve our town. To take this away from, and to put it in Board of Selectmen, only, to me, it seems like it's controlling. So the next thing I want to talk about is the RTM. So we were 50, we're now 51. So, we were fifty, we're now forty. You guys want to make us into thirty. Just to reiterate what the DTC chairman said about making it harder to canvass our district, he's right. It's hard enough with four. I'm not quite understanding why we changed it from fifty. Anyway, Greenwich has two-hundred-and-sixty members, and their town is not having an issue. So, I'm not quite sure why we're having an issue on this. I'm also not understand, I haven't heard anybody from the commission saying why less representation is better. So, thanks for listening to me. I appreciate everything that you guys have done. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And we're going to go to our next person in the audience.
My name's Patrick Berhany. I live at 827 Riverside Drive. First off, I want to thank you all for the amazing amount of work you put into this. I know you're looking forward to being over, probably, but thank you. I do want to, I think that minority party representation is a slap in the face of the voting public. And I see no reason to reduce the RTM to thirty. You know, as it is now, the ratio of RTM members to the citizens is much higher than Greenwich, Darien, and Westport. And those are the towns we should be emulating, I think. They're, by most standards, more successful than us in terms of tax rates and... Anyway, the one thing I want to discuss, and with all due respect to Mr. Melnick, I hope I pronounced your name right, sir. It seems to me very clear that these changes fundamentally impact the balance between the executive and legislative branch of the town government. I see no rationale to take the choice of constables from the voting, from the people to the executive branch. I see no, this idea of changing, the streamlining, the deliberative process for the budget. I'm all for efficiencies in the execution of confirmed policy decisions, but don't curtail the deliberative process. It's, yeah, it's messy, but we're talking about a budget of a hundred million dollars. And to prescribe the time that people are allowed to discuss it is going to shut down discussion, it's going to curtail dissent, and it's going to limit the need for compromise. And it's going to cause inefficiencies. It's going to cause mistakes, expensive mistakes. The other thing is, I appreciated that the explanation of Mr. Melnick on the required cooperation clause, because frankly, I found it very vague. I didn't understand how it would exercise authority in the interaction between departments. And his explanation actually gives me pause. I mean, what about the situation where the Conservation Department has, very quickly...
Yeah, if you could summarize.
Very quickly, the Conservation Department, by its mandate, has to object to a DPW plan or some other building project. Does this cooperation requirement, does this say they have to cooperate? That, it seems like more of a cudgel to make departments cooperate rather than follow the mandate, which is to serve the people. Thank you all for your...
Thank you. Thank you for coming, and thank you for your comments. And again, if we, we'll take the next member from the audience, and we'll go two and then one, because people are actually here, so...
My name's Christine Brown. I live at 82 Roland Road, and I'm one of the representatives on the RTM from District Nine. I'm here to speak out in opposition to the proposal to mandate minority representation in each RTM district, and I have five points to support this position. The first is that this proposal ignores a simple fact that democracy is, by definition, majority rule. On many local issues, there's broad bipartisan agreement on the RTM. However, on some issues, there are major policy differences between the parties, and there's nothing wrong with that. It gives voters a clear choice which party's policies to support. And so, if a majority of Fairfield voters vote for the RTM reps who best represent their views, why should a minority candidate be installed instead? If the majority has spoken, their will should prevail. That's the system we signed up for. Second, there seems to be an assumption here that parties vote as a bloc, and therefore we need to ensure minority representation, because the majority will always vote together. But certainly, the Democratic Caucus does not. The vote on overage funding for Gould Manor Park is a great example of that. Instilling a minority party candidate doesn't necessarily mean they will represent a position different from the majority. Third, this proposal also seems to ignore the huge number of unaffiliated voters in town. In the recent RTM race in District Nine, my district, the unaffiliated candidate earned the fewest votes, so really, wouldn't he represent the minority? Viewing this sole party lens seems wrong. Fourth, if the minority party is in the minority, perhaps the problem isn't representation. Perhaps the problem is the minority party's policies. And fifth, if the majority ends up enacting policies that the voters disagree with, they will quickly become the minority, and things will change. And that's the way the system's supposed to work. There's no need to mandate minority representation. Thank you.
Thanks for your comments. And we'll hear from the next WebEx person, please.
Okay, so, it's going to be Bill Hopf.
Hi. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can. Please proceed.
Okay, thank you. I live at 285 Hemlock Hills Road North in Fairfield, and I have two points. One is, the current size of the RTM is, I understand it is governed by the RTM itself. The charter states that the maximum is fifty-six, but the number is determined by the RTM. So, I don't see a reason for codifying it into the charter, where it could be changed by the RTM. It doesn't, I don't think it requires a charter revision to do so. I also will tell you that the, your folks have worked very hard over a long period of time to create the, as you're creating this charter revision proposal. And ultimately, it would be a shame if it was not to be ratified by the voters in referendum come the number. And I will tell you that, speaking for myself, but I believe there are a lot of people who feel this way, if you leave in minority representation, I think your efforts will be foreknocked. And I think that would be a shame. That would be a repeat of what happened with the redistricting commission, who worked for quite a while, only to have it come to nothing at the moment. So, that's it. Thanks for your time.
Thank you very much. We'll hear from the next person in the audience.
I mastered that. Great. My name is Ken Lee. I live at 71 Rota Avenue. My family's been here for about sixty years. Thank you for doing a thankless job. I'm sure you've had lots of fun. Thank you, Ms. Zaya Kono, for getting me in this hook ten, twelve, twelve years ago. I'll never forgive you. So, I did serve a couple of terms as an RTM rep. I won one, I lost one, and then I won one. Sadly, no one offered me a seat the year that I lost. This is going to be short, because I'm used to a minute and a half, so this is luxurious. I would like to, first of all, to applaud the civility section that I heard as being added. Had that been enforced during my tenure as an elected official, I undoubtedly would have continued to serve. But unfortunately, that was not the case, and that's sad. I regret having to be here tonight. I haven't attended a town meeting in five years, since I left the RTM. And I left the RTM because of the hostility. I'm going to be very honest about that. When I heard there was a charter revision commission, I expected it to review our current charter and see what needed to be revised to account for changes over the past decade. Clearly, that was not the goal. While I can say that I have not read the entire document, I looked at it today and said, "This is a weekend project." There are a couple of proposals that I really felt I needed to address, and I have the wrong glasses, so this is going to be a struggle. When I was a member of the RTM, we reduced the size of the body from fifty to forty. And that was a good choice made by the body itself, discussed and voted upon based on mutual bipartisan agreement. Unilaterally reducing the size of the RTM, the legislative body, whose charter is to enact laws, be the finer arbiter of the budget, and most importantly, provide oversight of the town management, reduces the accountability that is necessary. Disenfranchising voters by adding unelected folks to the legislative body, the minority party representation, is frankly un-American. When I served, we were in the minority in both the RTM and the Board of Finance, but no one suggested that we were entitled to more representation despite losing the elections. That's why we have elections. And the suggestion that an elected official will only serve and support members of his own party is hugely offensive. I can only wonder why independent candidates can't also get a seat without being elected. There's a lot of independent voters in this town. And to the budget process, it is long. If done diligently...
The minute and a half went quick, so it's three minutes. If you could summarize, that'd be helpful.
I will summarize in this. The budget process is just fine, okay? And the other thing is, you have to be careful what you get, because whoever's in power at any given time can do this again. So, incremental change is good, radical change, not so much.
Thank you very much. We'll take the next member in the audience that has a comment.
My name's Craig Curley. 109 Lakewood Drive, Fairfield, Connecticut. Twenty-six-year resident of Fairfield and current member of the Board of Finance. I don't have prepared remarks. I have reviewed the work that you've done, and thank you for all the service. I know it's a lot of work, especially for that man down there who's doing double duty, and Pam as well, with the RTM. So, thank you all for your service. There are two things that I want to address tonight. One is the budget process, one is the minority representation. I've followed the Board of Finance closely for the last fifteen years. This is my first time being on the board and going through the budget process. The Board of Finance has acted as a board that provides oversight and review with experts in the field who know what they're doing, who have a different perspective than perhaps the administration, and they have a chance to look at things through, do their due diligence. So, the idea of combining together the budget process and trying to create efficiencies is a good idea in theory, but likely bad in practice. And what I mean by that is, even just going through this year, and this year was no different than years past. Many of our meetings went five hours or more. We had, I believe, twelve to fifteen meetings in the month of March. It's a long process. It's difficult. It's arduous. But it is for a reason. We can't short-circuit that process. Also, by having those meetings sequentially, Board of Selectmen to the Board of Finance to the RTM, it allows each of those people who are going through the process to have follow-up questions. The RTM members actually have the benefit of watching the Board of Finance meetings. The Board of Finance has the benefit of watching the Board of Selectmen meetings. I understand that it's a burden on the administration and a burden on the department heads who have to go through this process, but you know what? It's difficult for a reason. There are lots of changes that are made year over year to the budget when it gets from the Board of Selectmen to the Board of Finance, and then potential changes after that by the RTM. Each of those bodies have to act as an independent oversight board. To the extent that this process is short-circuited and, in an attempt for efficiency, will not lead to efficiency. We have nine members on our Board of Finance, and those meetings ran long. We had follow-ups that we had to do. If we don't have the ability to, or if we try and make those meetings combined with so many people, we're not going to get through the agenda. So, maybe we get through a third of the agenda, and then we have to have twenty-four meetings. So, it's, combining these together is not necessarily going to be a more efficient process. With respect to the minority...
If you could summarize, yeah, we just want to hear you on that.
Thirty seconds, thirty seconds on this. I posit this. If there's a, if there's a district that is primarily controlled by one party or the other, District One or Ten by the Republicans, Four or Five by the Democrats, the minority party can post one person as their candidate for that election, and they don't have to run. They're going to have, be granted that seat. And likewise, the other party can put two names forward, and then those people will be elected. So, what's going to happen? You're taking the vote away from the voters. You have to give the chance, the voters a chance to pick their candidates, pick their representatives. It's a good idea, but in theory, but again, in practice, not every theory is good. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. We're going to go to the next person in WebEx.
Okay, that would be John Kuhn.
Hi there, John Kuhn. I am an RTM member, District Seven, 125 May Reed Road. I wanted to speak specifically about the thoughts of reducing the size of the RTM and potentially the minority rule aspect as well. In the budget process, there's much consternation about the Board of Ed and overspending, blah, 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 and can we find some savings, particularly in regard to capital projects? I may have stumbled upon something, and I'm pursuing it with, I guess Sal is the guy I'm talking to now, as well as somebody that I know from somewhere else. And my point is that my district is all Democrats. If we were reduced to three seats, I never would have run. If we had minority representation, even with four seats, that would have meant three Democratic seats, I never would have run. So, my ideas that I'm formulating with these people, which may save us money, may save us substantial, I don't know that, but my point is that if you limit the number of opportunities for people to bring ideas, that's going to be a, that's doing a disservice to the community. Now, I don't know if my idea is going to save us money. I don't know if it's going to save us a lot of money. But that idea never would have surfaced had I not had the opportunity to run. In a three-seat district, I wouldn't have run. In a minority-represented district where we'd have three Democrats and one Republican, I never would have run. So, that's sort of a real-world example of how that can impact the, how that can impact the goodness of Fairfield. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. The next person from the audience?
Bill Gerber, 25 Shady Hill Road, and back on the RTM. So, what are, what are the problems this commission's trying to solve? Many are asking, and we, many feel we haven't really gotten reasonable answers yet. I've heard some comments like, "Change can be hard for people," or "People need to stop worrying about turf." I've heard rationale for major changes that was, in essence, "I just really feel strongly about this." about this. A risk-management perspective would be, change may be hard, but change is reckless if it hasn't been proven to be changed for the good. I just feel this way, or it's my gut feeling, is a very low bar to justify change that can impact 62,000 residents, a grand list of $12 billion, a long-enjoyed AAA rating. With all due respect, I can't think of a single trusted towering public figure in Fairfield who has earned the right to tell residents that change is hard, but we should accept it, because I just feel strongly about it. RTM minimum minority representation is one example of change without substantiation. You seem determined to cap the seats of a party to two of the three in each of our 10 districts. Connecticut statutes provides a table to determine the maximum number of members. But it specifically says, this shall not apply to any body whose members are elected on the basis of geographical division. In other words, it shall not apply to our RTM. When you divide a geographical area, Lake Fairfield, into 10 sections in a responsible way, gifting one of three seats, or 33% of the RTM, to a minority party is more likely to distort the will of the people. What problem are you trying to solve? Obviously not compliance with state statutes or even best practice. We've told you that the RTM party balance has ebbed and flowed over the years. 2009, 76% was Republican, 53% in 2015, 43% in 2021. What problem are you trying to solve? Obviously not minority representation on the RTM. We told you that if you do this in a district that is heavily oriented towards a party, the other party likely will handpick a single candidate. And why not? Why would you run two candidates to compete for one automatic seat? And the majority party in that district will now be disincentivized from running more than two candidates. You know that minority party candidates can and have won in these districts when they worked hard and had a message that resonated. What problem are you trying to solve? Obviously not competition for votes. We've told you that RTM members respond to requests from constituents in their district without regard for party affiliation. I've never heard of an RTM member not calling DPW about a pothole or flooding issue. I'll wrap it up.
Okay, thank you.
We've told you that if you do this, in prior elections, eight losing candidates, or 27% of the RTM, would have been gifted seats, with three winning 16%, 18%, and 22% fewer votes than the person they would have bumped out. What problem are you trying to solve? Obviously not making districts more representative. We've told you that if you force this rule on RTM districts, in each of the past two elections, of the eight candidates gifted seats, five would have been Republicans and three Democrats, a net of two seats, or 7% of the RTM, would have been gifted to the Republican Party through this unnecessary rule. In Fairfield, two seats can easily swing an RTM that is nearly evenly split.
If you just, we get the details, if you could just summarize in a broad...
I'm done. So, my last question is, two seats switched over to the Republican Party in each of the last two elections. So, what problem are we really trying to solve here? Thanks.
Is there another member in the audience that would like to make a comment?
I'm sure I got this right. Can you hear me? Joe Seibert. I am a RTM member, District 5, serving my third term. Not to be redundant, but I feel compelled to be redundant for, on behalf of all the previous individuals who have spoken. The one thing I want to drill down on is the minority representation suggestion. I worked, after I was appointed in my first term, I ran Fair and Square and lost Fair and Square to Carol Way. I was, and I congratulated her for running a better campaign than I did. So, what did I do? Pick myself back up next term, worked my butt off, campaigned hard, and earned my election. Carol Way congratulated me. So, my point being, had there been a minority representation at that time, what incentive would I have to work my butt off to earn an elected slot? So, that sums it up, quite honestly. Thank you for your time.
And we'll take the next person from, we're going to go to WebEx.
Okay, it's Rainey Noor.
Are you there? Rainey?
Yes. Have a good evening. This looks very blurry. Let me change that. It looks horrible. There we go. I hope you can see me better now. Sorry for that. Rainey Noor, 83 Alberta Street, here in Fairfield. Thank you to the Commission for their diligence during the charter revision process and for the opportunity to speak tonight. I have to admit that I have not been able to read the 258 pages of the provided backup material for tonight's meeting. I was only able to attend a few of the previous meetings. So, my main concern is around the artificially codified reduction of the number of the members of the RTM to 30, when that body has not voiced a desire to further shrink itself beyond the current three-member level. I suggest that this charter revision commission retain the current maximum number and leave flexibility to the RTM to heightsize itself as needed. On a personal level, I am pretty certain that each Fairfield resident personally knows at least one of their four RTM members in their district. It reduces the barrier of access for items of concern, because it's much easier for me to talk to somebody I know personally about something that I feel might be just a small item, but if it's somebody I don't know, I would be shy about that. So, and I'm sure I'm not alone in that. I also agree with all those who objected to the minority presentation provision that was suggested. To enable the RTM to efficiently conduct its business, all members should be, and I hope they are, provided with adequate training, and the body needs to be given the tools to make informed decisions, such as access to nonpartisan legal advice when deliberating. As a side note, I would like to state that I think I'm not alone when I say that, as a resident who considers herself quite engaged in Fairfield, I feel utterly overwhelmed by the sheer number of initiatives currently underway, top of the general exhaustion brought on by the never-ending pandemic. Each of these initiatives deserves our utmost attention, and I fear we will end up with changes and revisions that were not adequately thought through, just because there's so much going on right now. If I still have a little time left, I would like to share a couple of items. I learned in a recent civility and practice webinar hosted by the Institute for Civility in Government at the Governor Joe Durell Center for Public Purpose, this was on May 26th. And it says, "Civility is claiming and caring for one's identity, needs, and beliefs without degrading someone else's process. Civility is about more than just politeness, although politeness is a necessary first step. It is about disagreeing without disrespect, seeking common ground as a starting point for dialogue about differences, listening past one's preconceptions, and teaching others to do the same. Civility is the hard work of staying present, even with those with whom we have deep-rooted and fierce disagreements. It is political in the sense that it is a necessary prerequisite for civic action, but it is political too in the sense that it is about negotiating interpersonal power such that everyone's voice is heard and nobody is ignored. And it begins with us." And that is different than traditional applications of civility that emphasize manners and behavior over meaningful engagement and shared understanding, which have led us to a fatal misunderstanding of civility and how to resolve our differences.
All right, your three minutes have elapsed, so if you could summarize, that would be great.
This is it. So, please review the section on civility in the proposed charter versions through this lens, as our understanding of civility does change. And I would really highly recommend everybody take this course that was offered. It was fabulous. Thank you very much for the opportunity to press it.
Thank you very much. And the next person from the audience that would like to speak?
My name is Cindy Wapnitsky. I live at 41 Valley View Place, and I've been a resident of Fairfield for 36 years. And I'll try and summarize. See, I have a lot to speak. It has come to my attention that many CRC members were chosen with pre-existing public records of wanting to radically change, and I emphasize the word radically, the current form of government. You really have to ask yourself, why? Is this a biased, politically motivated hack job by the politicians in this town? Or is it a good-faith effort to produce recommendations that are in the best interest for every citizen in the town of Fairfield? I urge everyone to take a minute to think about this question. I think this is a clear case of politicians and other special interest groups working diligently to keep and secure power, albeit minority rule. It is disheartening. It is sad to think what is going on on a national level has reared its ugly head in our wonderful town of Fairfield. Minority rule is undemocratic. Think about that for a minute. The imperative that the first person's should not only have relevant experience and capabilities, but also a track record that would prove to the public that they are trustworthy and unbiased. They should have our best interests at heart, not their own. They certainly should not be openly biased against the RTM or town commissions. We should all be more than just concerned and disappointed by this. We should be disgusted. C.R.?
I would ask you to limit your comments to the substance of the charter and not impugn the characters of the people, the volunteers that sit here and have given an inordinate amount of time. So, I would, I'm going to pause the time here. I'm not going to get into a debate. I'd like you to limit your comments to what's in the charter and what's proposed, please, and not attack the people who are serving on this commission.
That minority rule is undemocratic. And that is how I feel, and I hope that everyone in this town is paying attention to that, because that is not how the government in this country or in this town should work. And...
Well, I thank you for your comments. And we will have the next member from the audience as soon as she's finished filling out the sign-in sheet.
All right, Alex Durell, 64 Woodcrest Road, RTM 3. Whatever recommendations you make will be voted on by the Board of Selectmen and then voted on by the people of Fairfield and will support it. Thank you for your time, and thank you for your service. Just less is more.
And Prue, the next person from the WebEx, please.
Okay, the next person is Dylan O'Connor.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. Thank you to the Commission for your efforts. I know that it's a lot of work and probably feels thankless on a lot of levels. I am located at 31 Lower Street in Fairfield. I have spent the majority of my 45 years on this earth, living in the town of Fairfield. I'm a registered independent, and I'm pretty involved with things at the town level. I have to admit that when I first read about the potential revision to the charter around minority representation, the first thing that struck me was the idea that it felt very undemocratic to me. But I wanted to give it the proper due diligence, so I spent the last day or so speaking with people from both parties to kind of understand the rationale on both sides. And I have to tell you that after having those conversations, my initial gut reaction still remains. I feel that this provision is very anti-democratic. It feels very un-American to me. The idea that gifting a seat to somebody who hasn't earned the right to have that seat by way of winning the vote at the ballot box, it just does not feel right. And I hope that you'll consider that when you're making your final recommendations. But I just, I understand minority representation for bodies at large, like the Board of Finance and Board of Selectmen, but for bodies like the RTM that operate at a district, like smaller grassroots-type of geographical level, it serves no purpose to have minority representation, in my opinion. So, I hope you'll think that into consideration when you're making your recommendations. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And is there another person in the audience that would like to speak? Okay.
Hi, my name is Eve Darcy. I live at 827 Riverside Drive, and I wanted to thank you all for your commitment and service to the town. I'm also echoing a letter that Kathy Braun had sent in, and her sentiments I share. Specifically, removing the requirement that the Director of the Department of Public Works be a licensed engineer in the state of Connecticut, with all the problems involving DPW in recent years, and considering the newly urgent climate resiliency planning infrastructure needs and the need to update aging infrastructure, now is not the time to dilute this critical role and force the Director to continually rely on others for expertise. The Director must be fully competent and with the capacity to understand the needs and details of our public works projects. Also, I worry about combining budget sessions of the Board of Selectmen, Board of Finance, and the RTM. Each of these government entities has its own role, purpose, procedure, and process, and each should continue to run its own budget meetings, just as it runs its others. We shouldn't dilute these independent bodies on arguably the most important task they perform, which is the annual budget, affecting our property taxes, quality of life, and performance of town operations. Why would the budget process require less independent review and consideration than other meetings these bodies hold? Combining these independent bodies into joint meetings poses other questions. Who would run the meeting? I also feel strongly about not requiring minority party representation on the RTM. Reason's already shared by others. The RTM, as far as I know, is not a board or commission, and there's no reason to take away the will of the voters to elect the candidates that represent their interests in the 10 districts. Thank you.
Thanks for your time. Another member of the audience that would like to speak?
Okay. There you go. All righty. I'm Roger Rotory. I live at 1310 Melville Avenue. I've been there for close to 70 years. And I am currently a town constable, serving in the second term of the term. I want you to do something for me. I looked at the, what you did with the constables and 7-17A regarding appointments. I want you to amend that, too. There shall be not more than six constables appointed by the Board of Select Persons for a term of two years. You don't have the term listed at all. You just say, "appointed." And also, not more than half shall be from the same political party. This is a suggestion because we all talk about 10 years for the charter. If we, let me use the other hand. This one shakes a bit. For 10 years in the charter. So, if we do it for four, we may need more or we may need less. If you do it this way, you can go down to two, you can go to four, you can go to six. It doesn't bind you to anything. And it's a lot more equitable, and you need your friends at this point. And it's a lot more equitable, and you need your friends at this point, and right now you're not getting anything. So, that's my suggestion. The other point, if I have a couple more time, the Board of Selectmen, you didn't really delve into the dynamics of when you have a selectman, a first selectman who's one party and two selectmen who are the other party. Therefore, the two that are not the first selectmen end up having, they're actually in control for certain things. And as we saw last time, we had a situation where the two selectmen weren't really told anything. They weren't able to contact people within the department heads or anything, all had to go through the first selectman, and it didn't work well for anybody, including the town. We had the same situation when Jackie Durrell was in charge for the first term. John Sullivan, who was there for 24 years and was his last term, was the first selectman. Carl Dickman and Jackie were the two selectmen. Worked well because they all knew each other from being involved in politics and government and what have you. So, you know, things like Jackie being able to get a, Jackie and Carl being able to get an office and that sort of a thing. It's a lot better if you somehow get that dynamic in there instead of just letting it wait for something else because you're gonna have problems worse than what you got now.
Thank you for your comments tonight. And I think we're on... Next person on WebEx, please.
Okay, that would be Arlene Murphy.
Arlene, are you there? All right, let's go on to the next person, please.
Okay, James Oliveri.
Hello?
Is that Arlene? Okay, Arlene, you made it. Arlene, you have three minutes for comments to the commission on the proposed charter.
Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Okay, you can hear me now, yes?
We can still hear you.
Great, thank you, I apologize. I'll be very brief.
Okay.
My name is Arlene Murphy. I live at 23 Millard Street in Fairfield. And I just would like to share that I attempted to send public comments today, but my email was not accepted. The message I received was that you were above your quota. I'm hoping that there will be a way for me to send those tomorrow. But I'd like to reflect with you that the way I feel about that is that I don't feel heard as a Fairfield citizen. And, and from what I'm hearing from the comments today, or tonight, that many people don't feel heard. And I think that's a shame, because this commission has undergone a great deal of work. And because of some of these anti-democratic proposals that were included, people will have to, will have no choice but to work towards defeating it at the ballot box. And that would be a terrible shame. So I just wanted to share and reflect with you my experience as a Fairfield voter, and thank you for my, for your consideration. Will I be able to submit tomorrow somehow?
Well, I can tell you that we did confirm, our secretary, that your email was in fact received at 7:03.
Okay. Well, thank you. I appreciate that. All right, and that's, those are my comments. I hope that you will listen to all those who have given comments expressing grave concerns. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And now we'll return to the audience if there's another member that would like to speak. Oh, I think Liz, and then we'll go to Bill.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Elizabeth Sesima, and I live at 160 Fairfield Woods Road. I'm a current and also former member of the RTM. I'm the Majority Leader of the Democratic Caucus, and I've also served on the Board of Finance, so I have a lot of various budget experience. So as I've watched this process unfold, and I want to thank you all for your hard work, really extensive effort put into this. My concern is the public has grown to believe that this is a politically motivated effort to shift and consolidate power, and I do not want your work and your reputation to be besmirched by that appearance. You know, one thing I've noticed is that as suggestions, concerns, appeals, recommendations have come in, they seem to have unfortunately been disregarded. I don't see them reflected in the growing blueprint that you're putting together. So I, I mean, that concerns me. I appreciate hearing promises of transparency and calls for bipartisanship, especially from the administration. It feels now as if those have been abandoned, unfortunately. A couple of operational suggestions I would make. I think the town attorney and the town administrator should definitely be professional hires, not political hires. I think what we need to do is move away from anything that consolidates power, invites corruption, invites cronyism. And having those two positions especially, professional hires, I think would really benefit the town. Boards and commissions, I would like to suggest publicly, and I can work on it, you know, through my own elected channels, is that I think there could be a standing committee on the RTM that would be involved in the selection process, the vetting process especially of members of boards and commissions. I think the temptation is too great, and I, I think that's evident now, that there is a disregard for diversity. It tends to be a friends and family program, and I'm saying that that is the temptation of any party in power. The RTM, you know, we, we should be able to self-regulate. I don't mind the limit right now, the maximum of 56 members. I do not believe that this charter itself should limit either by number of district or number of members. I think that should be a point of self-regulation. We are the 11th largest municipality in Connecticut, and I think trying to shrink us down doesn't seem to serve any practical or operational purpose. Because I have experience, both on the RTM and the Board of Finance, in terms of budgets, I think the idea that the first select person, whoever that is, would chair a combined meeting really dilutes the power of each of those bodies and removes their independence. So I would say that I'm grateful that in these divisive times, one odd thing has happened as a result of this. There is an unlikely coalition of people, Republicans, Democrats, liberals, conservatives, independents, who have come together in this town, who recognize efforts to shift power in ways that the voters do not have a say in. And we kind of stand united, wanting to make sure that that doesn't happen, and we will make sure voters understand, whatever ends up on the ballot, what that truly represents. So I do want to, again, thank you for your time and taking up any of my recommendations.
All right, good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the commission. Thank you for your time and your service. My name is Bill Perogini, and I reside on Fairfield Beach Road, where I've lived for over two decades. I am an elected constable, and just wanted to comment briefly on the number and the process. This is my second term. It's been a challenging time. And, you know, given the rising number of conservatorships, the need for expeditious service, and the fact that not all constables felt comfortable serving respondents during some very challenging times, I don't see a strong need for reducing the number. I'm sure there might be metrics to support that, but I think by reducing the number by, you know, 40% might be excessive. Just relative to the process, it's my understanding that there's a fundamental difference between appointed and elected constables per Connecticut general statute. So a change in the process might necessitate an adjustment in the scope of responsibility and the nature of the law enforcement function. I'm not sure if that was considered, but I certainly wanted to bring that to the attention of the commission. So, thank you very much.
And we're gonna turn to WebEx at this point.
Okay, now James Oliveri.
Good evening, everyone, and members of the committee. Just want to say thank you for putting in this effort. I know it's no easy burden. I really just wanted to sort of, again, this is regurgitation of what was already said, was lowering the number of RTM members. I live at 157 Benedict Street, and I am a transplant from Greenwich, where we had 230 members of the RTM. As I see the population growing here, I do not see any need to reduce the constituency representation. And I almost feel the number should be going in the opposite direction, which is increasing the number of RTM members. Outside of that, I'm gonna repeat what everyone else has pretty much said, the minority interest clause, I do not agree with. I do believe it's gifting a seat, and if the minority party wants more representation in the districts, they may want to reconsider what their views are, considering the constituency in the neighborhood. And that's all I would like to say.
Are there other members in the audience that wish to be heard? Okay.
Can you guys hear me? Very good. All right. My name is Peter Hinkle, and I live at 160 Larkspur Road. I've been a voter for all of six months now, and I'm surprised to be up here. I'm surprised to be up here this soon, but I'm certainly glad to do it and to be speaking with you all tonight. I'll be honest, I was up here because I was a little bit confused about some of the things I was reading, and I know that there are a number of great reforms in this recharter, and I want to make sure that those are implemented after this November and that they wouldn't be lost due to certain elements, you know, counterproductive nature. So although, although touched on many times tonight, I will repeat points made to emphasize their importance. So we have more than 60,000 residents in the town of Fairfield and 40 members on our RTM to represent these citizens. Bringing this number down to 30 would decrease the flexibility and range of our RTM to focus on the many issues that affect our town. Quite simply, there is power in numbers, so we need, we should welcome a sizable RTM to manage these various topics. An expansive town representative body has proven beneficial in other towns like Greenwich and many others, so it should be, so it should continue to do so here in Fairfield. An RTM member cannot be expected to properly hear the views and concerns of 2,000 or more people. I can assure you that I certainly do not know, nor will I likely ever know, 2,000 or more people in this town. In order to ensure as participatory a democracy as possible in which town residents view our views are applied in our government as directly as possible, we need to keep our representation local. I'd also like to touch on, on the issue of the decreased majority representation. It is certain that such an amendment would lead to uncompetitive races led by potentially less engaged candidates in comparison to our now very active RTM. I'm not afraid of losing my representation as a member currently of the majority party, but what I fear is that the majority party will always lack the proportionate representation that they deserve, Democrat or Republican or another. Because whether I like it or not, party control in the town changes regularly, and Democrats soon, will soon, if these changes are enacted, excuse me, another party will eventually suffer the same way Democrats will soon if these changes are enacted. Both parties are clearly represented right now, and these changes are unnecessary and uncalled for. Residents need the most accurate representation possible, which the proposed charter revisions do not ensure. I would also like to leave on the record that the RTM is in need of legal assistance to draft ordinances, and the Finance Board should retain its current role in the budget process rather than in a combined meeting with other bodies. I also hope that the town administrator role will be a merit-based hire rather than one appointed on the, at the whim of the elected first selectman, select person. I thank you for the opportunity to speak with you and for your serious consideration of everyone's suggestions here tonight. Thank you.
Good evening. Jennifer Jacobson, 40 Victoria Court. Thank you all for your service and hosting us all this evening. I'm gonna get a little more technical, bit of a policy wonk here. For those following along at home or for, you're on page eight for the Rules of Order, C12. For those at home right now, Robert's Rules of Order generally govern all of our public meetings. In this revision, we have three different sections that have been drafted as changes. I'm a little bit confused as to these three sections, as we start out with the town may adopt ordinances. I was unclear on who you were referring to as to the specific nature of who would be adopting such ordinances governing public meetings. Generally, I would think that would be the RTM, but without specific designation, I'm thinking that it becomes the people of our town. It would be subject to referendum, so asking for some clarification there. Moving to one and two, we're talking about Robert Rules of Order. It says it shall be how we operate our meetings unless otherwise specified. But then we go to two, where every single board and commission in our town is therefore also shall, which means must, approve and adopt their own. So I'm a little bit confused on how we have three different provisions here. We've got a shall, a may, and notwithstanding, and not foregoing, unless. So I find two to be conflicting and redundant to one. I'm not sure how the public in E could be expected to understand or follow every board or commission adopting its own set of rules in this provision, notwithstanding the fact that I feel that it's a little bit vague, it's totally vague, without any how are they being adopted? Is it a unanimous vote? Is it a two-thirds vote? Is it a simple majority vote? Just seems to be up to the will, without any public notice or process or procedures there. The last thing I'm gonna talk about is, on page 37. Right now, our town charter does not dictate to the RTM what they shall appropriate funds for. That's up to them, discretion based upon the process that we go through. Now, maybe that's a good thing to some people and maybe to the chagrin to others, but there is a provision on page 37 where we're going to dictate, the recommendation is thus far is to dictate to the RTM what they shall appropriate sufficient funds for. I think that, I'm not sure if they're actually technically possible to do that unless it comes from the Board of Finance first. So I'm not sure if that is meant to be a de facto mandate upon the Board of Finance primarily to flow through down to the RTM. That's a technical question for you to answer, but philosophically, if we're going to move towards using the town charter to dictate to the RTM what they shall provide sufficient funding for, I think it would be only fair for the people to also be able to provide other ideas for you that they would like to see sufficiently dictated to the RTM and funded in our town. And I'd be happy to provide my own ideas, so.
The nick of time there. Well, thank you for those very specific comments. We'll look at those. Did we get an email from you listing those?
No.
Okay. No, I mean, I wrote them down, but if you, it sounded like you had some pretty technical things, so if you wouldn't mind sending them in, we'll run them by. Thank you. Do you have anybody else on WebEx that would like to make a comment?
Yes, a select woman left quits.
Hello, good evening, and thank you all for your time, and, and thank you for hosting this meeting. I'm mostly here tonight to listen and to pose some questions that I hope will become the cornerstone of productive, non-political conversations around the Board of Selectmen table. But first, I do want to speak to minority representation because it's personal. I want to see on the RTM in District 1, a district that had historically not elected a Democrat in, I think, several decades. And I did this by working harder than any other candidate, frankly. I literally knocked on thousands of doors. than any other candidate, frankly. I literally knocked on thousands of doors. I spoke to constituents. I won over hearts and minds. And I'm not going to lie, that victory was all the more sweet because it was hard fought and hard won. And I just wanted to share that as food for thought. And now, in a more broad way, as codified, the recommendations of this group, of the CRC, are to be equitable, sustainable, and inclusive of all citizens of Fairfield. So before I can effectively consider any proposed changes when it's brought to the Board of Selectmen, I will want to understand some questions, and these questions have been brought before us from residents. I'll want to understand and evaluate any available data as backup. I'd like to understand with each of your recommendations what we were trying to solve for, as some of our other callers and participants tonight have asked. How have each of these proposed recommendations offered a viable, equitable, and sustainable solution? So I'd like to know what those principles of sustainability and of equity were employed. So these data points, along with compelling rationale for your changes, are for me, I'd like to understand what's in the best interest of all residents, and that's essential for me before I can support these recommendations. Additionally, I'd like to know what intended consequences are, what the benefits are. What are any associated risks? What do we gain or lose by doing nothing? And I'd really like to see from both sides what people have to say. So finally, two points. How are you managing the scores of suggestions and recommendations that have not been addressed by your changes? What was your hierarchy for determining what issues you actually tackled? For example, there's an entire section now on civility, but no language around racial equity, which has been a rallying cry for so many. I believe that failure to codify language and opportunities that promote and support equitable outcomes for all our residents here is a failure to ensure that our charter actually is inclusive of all residents. So I do look forward to having real dialogue around the Board of Selectmen table, but in the meantime, I wanted to lay these questions down as a foundation for a future conversation and to let the residents know that as their selectwoman, as their minority selectwoman, I have been listening and I will continue to do so. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you very much, Selectwoman Lefkowitz. Is there another member of the audience that would like to speak?
All right. Kathleen Griffin, 15 Stony Brook Road. I am an elected member of the Board of Assessment Appeals. I have served on the RTM, and probably for most of what I want to say comes from my experience of working eight years in the First Selectmen's Office. Since you guys started meeting, it's been my observation, there's consensus among the members that professional management is needed. You've even gone so far as to put the position in the charter and describe the qualifications for it. I appreciate that, and I think that's a step in the right direction. However, the commission has not taken the very important next steps to define the role and empower it. As currently written, the position is set up to be a highly paid political appointment, appointed by, reporting to, and serving solely at the pleasure of the First Selectwoman. A position like that will be unattractive to someone who wishes to serve apolitically or across administrations. We don't have a mayor in Fairfield, and I don't think residents are interested in having one. Yet this position, as currently defined, is modeled after the administrative positions in mayor council forms of government, where the chief administrative officers are appointed by and serve solely at the pleasure of the mayors that appoint them. Those CAOs come and go with changes in administration, like in Bridgeport or Stratford. We have a Board of Selectmen representative town meeting form of government here in Fairfield. This new position should be modeled after the town administrator positions in towns that have a similar form of government and have success with professionalism and continuity across the administrations. You don't have to look very far to see examples. Greenwich has a three-member Board of Selectmen, a 230-member RTM, and a town administrator appointed by a search committee, a very transparent and deliberate process. Darien has a five-member Board of Selectmen, 100-member RTM, and a town administrator that's appointed by and serves at the pleasure of the Board of Selectmen. Weston has a Board of Selectmen and a town administrator whose hiring and dismissal requires the approval of the board. To that end, I'm asking you to consider making the following changes to the charter as it relates to the appointment process and the role of the administrator. Have the position appointed by the Board of Selectpersons or selected by a search committee. Include six or seven broad job responsibilities for the position, similar to what's in the charter for town officers and many department heads. Remove the newly added chief of staff language and position, potential direct and political challenge to the role and responsibilities of the town administrator. We all know chiefs of staff are generally highly political, and that's been no exception in Fairfield. And language that allows the town administrator and the Board of Selectpersons to determine their administrative staff working together is needed to administer the business of the town and not just the first select person. And finally, give the town administrator significant responsibility for the budget compilation and presentation, along with the first select person or the Board of Selectmen. I'd also like you to ask you to look at Wilton, who is just in the process of hiring their first town administrator, and it's actually Republican First Selectwoman Vander Slice who's been pushing for it. She lists some of the reasons she supports the position. Residents will benefit from a professionally-run town. There'll be continuity in government. The first select person will actually have more time to engage in legislative proposals at the state and regional level, and the candidate pool will be quoted, will be expanded. The First Selectman Vander Slice goes on to say, "We're looking for continuity in government. We're not looking for a chief of staff." She even agreed to take a salary cut to fund the position. I think the majority of the residents would like to have this in Fairfield. It's time to come here and bring this into our town hall.
Thank you for your comments. Is there another member of the audience that wishes to speak?
Is this working?
Yeah.
All right. So my name is Matthew McKinnis. I live at 301 Saskewell Road, and I want to focus on two main issues. Firstly, I think that reducing the RTM from 40 members to 30 is a dangerous mistake. I think that it should be up to the RTM how many members they should have. They are the ones elected by the people of Fairfield, and they should be able to decide how many people are needed on the board. I think that the point of democracy is that it is messy, and I think that some of the complaints around having a 40-member RTM are that it's complicated and that, you know, there's a lot of people there, there's a lot of opposing viewpoints, but I genuinely think that's an amazing part about having such a large RTM. And even so, with our 40-member RTM, as many people have mentioned, if we just look around us, there's so many RTMs that are so much larger, and they don't seem to have this problem that we apparently have, that our RTM is just too large. I also want to say what many people have echoed about minority representation. I believe that it's completely undemocratic to award a party in any district, regardless Democrat, Republican, of a seat that they did not earn, that they did not work for. And I think that, I mean, if we look at the 2021 election in Fairfield, some districts, I believe it was either District Four or Five, instead of having four Democrats and a Republican running and trying their best to win, we would have three, well, under this proposal, two Democrats and a Republican who wouldn't have to canvass at all, because there's, they wouldn't have to know what their voters want, because there's a guaranteed spot for the one Republican, and there's guaranteed spots for the two Democrats if the Republicans only nominate one candidate. I think that as somebody who assisted in an RTM race in 2021, District 10, I worked for the Democratic Party, and we lost all four seats. And I didn't ask for us to be given a seat because we tried. We shouldn't be given a participation trophy. The voters of District 10 turned out, and they said no. They voted for the candidates they wanted, and our candidates should not have just been gifted a seat because we want it. I think that there's always been a minority representation on the RTM, and I think that just giving minority party just extra seats because there's some call for it, which I haven't seen from the people who are engaged in this process, is completely undemocratic, and I think it's an issue that is just nonexistent. And I just want to end with the fact that I think it's very telling that there's, out of the, by my count, 32 people who have spoken today, a single one was completely in support, and it wasn't something specific that he was in support of. It was just supporting the charter revision no matter what. And I don't really think that that truly shows engagement with the process, because there's always going to be something that we disagree with in a process like this.
Do we have another member on, I mean, person that wishes to speak from WebEx? Okay. Oh, any, any on the phone?
Sorry, Chair, Mr. Chair. We do have, we might have people on the phone that want to speak as well. So.
How do we know that?
They would have to unmute themselves, star six, to be able to speak.
Okay, if there's someone who's dialed in, if you hit star six, and if you'd like to make a comment, now would be the time. Well, in the meantime, is there another member of the audience here that would like to make a comment?
Is that working now? Okay. My name is Sherry Stenick. I live at 75 Parkway in Fairfield. I have lived in Fairfield for 53 years. I have been involved in politics for probably 43 of those years. The last bit of time, in the very beginning of the time, I did not participate, and I haven't been involved very much for the last 10 years. I'm saying this because I've been on the RTM multiple times. I've been on Board of Selectmen. There were more than 50 people on, actually, I think there were 50 when I was on it. My mother was on it before. She, I think there were 56 when she was on it. It is an unruly body. I can tell you that I didn't always enjoy being there, but it's the process. As the young gentleman who actually spoke and made my day, both of them, said, "This is the democratic process, and we need to get discussion out." Mr. Curley mentioned the fact that, I believe it was he that mentioned the fact that at each level of the budgeting process, there's something that goes on, that people start asking the right questions. It sparks interest in something. Some topic comes up after the meeting usually, comes up at the next meeting. So each of the three bodies is important. The process that they perform is important. And by the time it gets to the RTM, no matter how messy it is, it's gotten a lot of public discussion. As far as reducing the number of members, I don't think you should reduce the number of members because of that discussion. It is unruly. It's not fun going to after 12:00 midnight, having meetings many times, but it's part of the process, and the group decides whether they stay late, by the way, or comes back the next day. And as we all know, we've come back many times the next day, too. As Liz Zesema said, town attorney, town manager, I'm not completely convinced we need a town manager right now, but I'm open to discussion on that. But if we do get one, both of those should be professional hires. It takes away the political from it. We'll have much, a much better process without the political. When I was on the Board of Selectmen, Ralph Bolley, Ken Plato, and I were on that board. Ken and I were both Democrats. There were plenty of times that Ralph and I voted the same way, and Ken wasn't happy. So I'm going to tell you that the people who run the meetings are the ones who control how the process works. If you have a good moderator at the RTM, it runs much more smoothly. There were two that were fantastic, there were many that were really good, but two that stand in my mind. Jack Slane was one. Usually, they were attorneys, by the way, and they had a knowledge of Robert's Rules, and the process went smoothly. Joel Green was another. But, let's see, what else? Robert's Rules of Order should be, continue to be the regulation for the meetings. Ms. Lefkowitz's comments were great, the rationale of why things are being changed. I'll make this really quick. And the benefits and risks of doing nothing are important. And there was one more thing. Oh, the last thing is, when Judy Ewing came up, I wanted to stand up and give her my three minutes. I'm going to tell you, whatever she has on that paper she gave you, read it twice. I'm not kidding.
That's an endorsement for you, Ms. Ewing. The, did we get anyone on the phone in the meantime? So I think we're all, the virtual world, we're all squared away, so is there anyone left?
Do you have anyone from the phone? No? Oh, okay.
Oh, does anyone else know that person, or? In the meantime, is there anyone else here who would like to make a comment? So if you're on the phone and you can hear us, if you press star six, you can make a comment to the commission.
Okay, yeah, there's only one, one person, and if they're not unmuted.
All right, so I think then, last call, anyone, put your name in the chat if you want to make a comment, and here in person. Anyone else wish to speak? Well, I certainly thank everyone for this participation. We certainly hear what you say and have a lot to consider. So we will be closing the public comment on these proposed changes and...
I'd just like to recognize everybody that showed up here and provided their thoughtful, civil, intelligent comments, and for sitting, you know, and listening to people and participating and providing us your thoughts. Very helpful, very much appreciated.
We're going to close the public comment and move on to preliminary discussion. Is there, before we do that, do any other commissioners have any comments that they would like to make? Mr. Rotola?
My only comment right now is on a constable issue, and commission members, correct me if I'm wrong, the, we were, the reasons why we made these changes was it came from the probate court, isn't that correct?
Yeah.
It was their recommendation. It wasn't something that we just decided to do on our own, so I wanted to make that clear, that that's kind of the directive we got. And if anyone else on the commission wants to comment on that, I just want them to do so.
John, I agree with your thoughts. I think that is what we heard. Also, it's not a position that candidates for that really, is well-understood what their role is in town, so it's hard to really allow them to put their skills and capabilities out there. We thought it was best to listen to the court, which is the most experienced, knowledgeable consumer of those services for the benefit of all the residents in town.
All right, so in terms of the next agenda item, the preliminary discussions, I think we've heard a lot. It's nine o'clock. We do have a, another meeting scheduled, which I wanted to address the timing of, but I think we probably should digest what we've heard and then reconvene and kind of approach how to revise our document and recommend, ultimate recommendations based on, on these comments. Any discussion on that, or does anybody feel that they would like to get into it right now? All right, I think by your silence, I'm going to understand that you, Attorney Mednick, did you have a question or comment?
Yeah, I was just going to ask everybody to think about what they heard this evening at the public hearing. That's the purpose for the statutory public hearing that we're holding this evening. Let's look at everything we've received from the public that's been received, and I think now been posted. And over the weekend, if you could give some thought to it, and if there are issues that you think we need to discuss on Monday, let, give me a heads up on those things that you may want to discuss, so that I can prepare for the meeting on Monday. Monday. So I just wanted to give you that little piece of advice.
In addition to that, moving on to the next agenda item, next steps, can you lay out the process in terms of, we'll meet on Monday, we have to discuss the time, but then after that, what is next, and do we have a date to?
Well, the expectation of Monday, and if we can't complete it on Monday, we may have to take some additional time, and we'll talk to the Board of Selectmen about that. But our next step is to approve the charter, the proposed charter, taking into consideration all the public testimony from last September, October, throughout this process, through the public, multiple public comment provisions, times that you had for members of the public to testify, and that we take a look at it, make some final determinations. I've made a few editorial changes, internal changes. I'm very interested in looking at the comments that one of the people talked about, the conflict between the various rules provisions. I hope that we get a follow-up. I looked at the language. I'm not sure it's as conflicting as it could be, but I'm very happy to see what we can do to make that language work. I appreciate that testimony very much. And my hope, the expectation is if you approve the document, even if there are things we modify on Monday, then I would try to get to a red line after the meeting to take a look at, to make sure I've captured everything, and that document would then be submitted to the Board of Selectmen with a transmittal letter from the chair and the vice chair usually in this process. It would then go to the Board of Selectmen. The Board of Selectmen would then have an opportunity to review. There would be a joint meeting between leadership, if not the entire, we have a pretty small commission, so I would hope that most of the commissioners would be involved in that meeting where the document is transferred to the Board of Selectmen, and we would go through this document chapter by chapter with the Board of Selectmen. They have the ability during that period of time to approve, disapprove, or raise questions and recommendations to us to come back to us one last time. If they were to take that last course, we would be strictly limited to the items that they raised during that period of time, and we can only respond to the specific recommendations that they raised. We then send it back to them. This would be sometime in July or August, and they would either approve in part, reject in part, approve in whole, or reject in whole the document. If they approve it in some form, they'd approve questions for the ballot, and they'd be submitted to the Secretary of the State in early September. So that's where we go from here. So the hope is that we finish on Monday, but if there are a number of issues that have provoked thinking on the board, I'd recommend that we think about having another day, but I don't think we should go beyond the next week.
Okay, thank you.
That was helpful.
It is helpful. Any questions for Mr. Mednick, Attorney Mednick? So then, the meeting, we had tentatively agreed that Monday, June 6, was a date that we all could accommodate. I suggested a time of four o'clock. Does anyone have a conflict with that? It will be on WebEx. Are there any conflicts with four o'clock on Monday? No? Okay, so that will be our next meeting. At that time, we can find a date if we need to for a follow-up meeting. It will be held on WebEx, and in the meantime, we have a lot of homework to do. Again, I'd like to thank everyone out there who submitted testimony via email, who called in, or rather, appeared via WebEx, and everyone for taking the time to actually show up, and I was glad that we could actually meet in person for once, and it's good to see faces and interact with people. I find it much more rewarding personally, so thank you all. And I will entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting. Moved by Pamela Iikono and seconded by Marlene.